Yeah. Jocularity, jocularity, jocularity. I'd like to bring in order of the Rock Valley College Board of Trustees, Community College District Number 511, our regular board meeting for July 22nd at 2025. Maybe have a roll call.
Trojan?
Here.
Simpson?
Here.
Nelson?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Goldsmith, here. Salto?
Here.
Kudia?
Here.
Gorski?
Here. I believe we have all of our board members in attendance this evening, so we can pass on Item C. Do you have any communications and petitions or public comment?
No communications or petitions.
And no public comment, okay. Recognition of visitors.
No recognition of visitors.
Okay, we're moving right along. General presentations.
Yes, we do have one general presentation by our Chief Financial Officer, Ellen Olson, to discuss the Illinois Community College Financial Officers' Financial SWOT Analysis.
All right. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Before we begin, can you tell me what SWOT stands for?
Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats.
Well, there you go.
It's usually a four-corner grid represented graphically where I identify those strengths, those weaknesses, opportunities, and/or threats. Thank you.
So, go to the next page. So, we're going to describe what those strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats mean. So, in a SWOT analysis, strengths and weaknesses are considered internal characteristics of the institution. So, the strengths would be the positive characteristics that contribute to success, and the weaknesses would be those negative characteristics that inhibit our success. Externally, we have opportunities and threats. So, they are positive environmental factors that create potential for success, where with threats are the negative environmental factors that can inhibit our success. So, we were asked to do, and go to the next page, to do a SWOT analysis, and what was asked was for me to survey the Illinois Community College Chief Financial Officer Group for input regarding their perceived strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. And from that input, I have prepared this presentation, and these are the themes we've identified.
Question. When you say "their perceived strengths," et cetera, is that the ICC strengths or our strengths?
The strengths of their colleges, the community colleges as a whole.
As a whole?
Yes. So, for strengths, some of the comments I received and things that I'm presenting here is stability and leadership and finances. Most of the community colleges here now feel that there is stability in their leadership and stability in their finances, but there is a threat or weakness that I'll get to in a little bit. Affordability: community colleges maintain a low tuition and fees. Most of our colleges have nonprofit foundations that can offer scholarships and program funds, and the community colleges have the ability to levy taxes in the district. Also, another strength is location. We have the ability to serve local communities, even in the rural areas with satellite or extension center campuses, such like we have the ATC in Belvedere, and we have a campus downtown right now at the old news tower. We offer short-term credentials that can lead to family sustaining wages. Most of us carry healthy operating funds or reserves to mitigate potential external threats, and we are accredited institutions with the ability to provide financial aid to our students. Weaknesses. One weakness that we recognize and we've talked about often in our meetings is the enrollment. The demographic cliff is here with the expectation of lower future birth rates that will be resulting in decrease in traditional age students entering college. State of the Illinois budget challenges, which includes continued underfunding of community colleges, increase in pension liability, and past being other post-retirement employee benefits to the college. And why did I include this one here, not as an external? This is inherent to us being in Illinois Community College under the Public Community College Act. Also, another weakness is the migration out of the state of Illinois. Illinois currently ranks 48th for people moving out of the state. Additional weaknesses is our inability to increase tuition or local taxes to fully bridge that gap from underfunding from the state of Illinois. And as a reminder, we are limited by referendum to the maximum levy rates, and we are bound by the Illinois Community College Act on the amount of tuition that we can charge. Go to the next slide, please. Oh, go back to opportunities. Opportunities that the Community College CFO Group sees is the possibility of offering community college baccalaureate programs or degrees, or seeing emerging industries with opportunities to build new relationships and partnerships and design new short-term certificates for our students. We are a low-cost provider. Community colleges are more nimble to adapt to the changing needs of students with short-term technical programs, workforce programs, credentials, and stackable credentials. Another opportunity is the ICC funding formula changes. You'll see that I have it also as a threat, because I'm not sure if it's an opportunity or threat yet. The ICCB developed an adequacy and equity in community college funding working group. Couple members of the board were on that to provide actionable recommendations for achieving equity and adequacy in funding. The ICCB has created a formula, Funding Formula Working Group, which will start meeting in August. There are three groups. One is the Base Operating Technico Modeling Group, the Equalization Technico Modeling Group, and the Dual Credit Policy and Technical Modeling Group. Additional threats or threats is the federal political environment. We're hearing about posturing for changes in Pell grant eligibility for our students, reductions or eliminations of federal grants, both directly to the college and pass through through the state of Illinois, and the impact of higher tariffs resulting in higher costs, especially for construction, repairs, and maintenance of facilities. We are in a competitive market. Higher ed is competitive. We have a number of alternative providers of alternative credentials, both accredited and non-accredited, as more students embark on non-traditional approaches to higher ed and an increase in specific competency-based offerings. And students are consumers. They make choices outside of traditional higher education for post-secondary learning. And again, the ICCB funding formula change, we'll find out if that is truly an opportunity or a threat. Also, public polling no longer sees higher ed as a value. They question the value of higher ed. They want a demonstrated return on investment. They question the need for a degree versus short-term credentials or certificates that are ongoing. And it is important for us to ensure that outcomes are matched with student expectations for the needs of a relevant workforce. An additional threat is the unfunded mandates from the state of Illinois. They are not funded, and they do increase our operating cost for the college to remain in compliance. Also, we are facing more complex legal issues resulting in increasing legal fees and litigation risk. The new presidential administration is bringing new directives that may be confusing or contradictory to existing practices, and we need expertise in policy and legal issues, both at the Board of Trustee level and the administration, to interpret the laws and the legislation. Some of the strategies that we came up with or I thought about is recruitment and marketing towards adult learners. We've talked about this in the past. This would be RVC Downtown West and with our workforce development career and pathways. We need to develop workforce partnerships with measurable incomes or outcomes. We need to build strong programs and public statements about the value of college to learners and students with a measurable increase in the quality of the student's life. We need to continue to maintain that operating fund balance between 35% to 50% in accordance to board policy. We need to continue with annual forecasting, and we need ICCB and ICTA to maintain a statewide awareness and provide legislative updates, maintain and maintain political acumen. And all of us need to continue to share Rock Valley College's story to the district we serve that will encourage people to know more about our college, our programs, our campus, and encourage them to come. Are there any questions?
I'll start from left. Crystal?
Not right now.
Yeah? Gloria? Okay. Yeah?
No.
Yes. You mentioned state underfunding. What, where are we with respect to being underfunded, and what determines how much, if we are, underfunded?
So, the ICCB has a funding formula right now, and they look at our cost to, for a credit hour, and then they look at what each, or they look at it in total. So, then they look at what all the districts receive for tuition, what all the districts receive for tax levies, and then they come up with the cost that should be coming from the state of Illinois to help support operating funds. When they look at that cost compared to what the state provides on the base operating fund, community colleges as a whole are 80% underfunded.
So, in our case, what does that translate to in terms of millions of dollars that we're short?
I'm trying to do some math in my head. Bear with me a minute.
Approximately.
Um, probably at least, so we receive about $5 million for base operating. We're 80% short, so...
About $5 million?
Five, we receive five.
Okay.
Uh, Kristen?
No, go ahead.
About $40 million, or $4 million? $40 million.
$40 million? Are you saying that since...
Wait. Sorry, I want to let Bob finish?
Yeah.
And I'm moving through systematically here. Okay, so, Bob?
Yes, it's five, about $5 million.
We, no, we receive $5 million a year, and that's only 20%.
Yeah.
So, five times four, it's $20 million.
Oh, five times five.
Five, four is twenty.
Yeah, $20 million.
We're short $20 million.
That's if...
By the formula.
If the state fully funded us, we would receive an additional $20 million.
Yes, for me, it's okay.
And Kristen, anything? Okay, John?
But I thought that this year we were getting $8 million. Isn't that right?
When I say base operating, I'm talking about only one of them. We also receive an equalization grant.
I didn't, I didn't hear you, and you went too fast for me to understand.
We receive two grants from the state of Illinois. We receive a base operating grant, which is what we were just talking about, and then we also receive an equalization grant, which is an equalization of the tax basis across the state of Illinois, and that's a different formula.
Okay. But bottom line is, we get two grants from the state, and they both fund our operation, right?
Correct.
So, it would be, if that is 20%, and we got $8 million, then 100% would be $40 million. Then, so that would, 80% of that would be $32 million. So, are you suggesting we're, we're being shorted by $32 million?
No.
Twenty?
No. We receive, okay, let's talk about the base operating grant first.
And can I just interrupt this a bit? So, and we're talking about potential strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. She's bringing up potential.
Correct.
And my question really is, did this organization, which I assume you were at least on the periphery of, if not involved with, did they actually come out with an implication that the governor should come up with 80% more funding for community colleges? Is that what, I don't recall that as an ICC TA priority.
The Illinois Community College Board is the one who processes all of the grants received from the state of Illinois to the community colleges. They do the calculations of the grants we receive. And yes, they're the ones, if you look at their funding formula and their technical spreadsheets, they would say that yes, the community colleges as a whole are underfunded by the state of Illinois, 80% for the base operating grant. I do not recall the percentage on the equalization grant off the top of my head.
Well, so, how many billion dollars is that total, then?
I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. I don't have the technical schedule in front of me.
Okay.
This might help. Just hours ago, so it may be news to you, it may be news to you. President Spearman and I had a discussion that possibly as a suggestion at the retreat in January, we have our own kind of financial SWOT analysis and/or one on enrollment going future. So, enrollment and financials kind of separate based on what's coming up at the ACCT and kind of an expansion of this with more details specific to us. But we just started that discussion, and I was going to bring it up under new business to say we're going to see if that's how we really want the retreat to be focused, and we can talk about that in August. But if we do that, then we can get, they'll be prepared, and they'll all be prepared for both the enrollment and financial specifics going forward, and that'll give us some more meat to, you know, to talk about that.
Well, that would be fine with me.
Okay. Any other questions for Ellen? I want to thank you. That was a nice, tight, concise report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you, Ellen.
Thank you.
Anything else? No other general presentations, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I like, there's approval of minutes. Do I have a, hear a motion to approve the minutes of June 10th, Committee of the Whole, and June 24th, the regular board meeting?
So moved, but I'd like to speak to it.
Sure. Who moved over? Gloria seconded by Bob. Bob?
Yes, under the item number two, the June 24th regular board meeting, in your packet, we had two meetings. We had a public hearing meeting, which had a proper roll call, and the regular board meeting. So, from my perspective, we should have voted on both of those in here, not just the agenda for the board meeting. You follow?
I do.
And Matt's is, I'll...
So, do we need an amendment to the... Well, the agenda item here, G number two, only refers to the board meeting, the regular board meeting. But if you look at the paperwork back here, there's notes that cover two meetings. One, the public hearing, which had a roll call, and then the regular board meeting, which also had a roll call. And so, therefore, to me, there was two meetings held that day, not one. So, we should be voting on, yeah, the minutes. I mean, it's a small technicality, but you know.
So...
Or a friendly amendment?
Yes.
And Mr. Nelson, was that a friendly amendment to...
Well, I would make that friendly amendment if accepted by the mover, movent.
Yes.
And the second, that we include the extra budget hearing minutes.
Yes.
Okay, so we hear a friendly amendment, or agrees, Bob agrees?
Technically, we're looking at three sets of minutes.
Right.
Right.
Correct.
All right, yeah. I'm okay with it.
Do we have a friendly amendment? What else do we need for that? Anything else?
I don't think so.
A second?
A second.
Okay.
And that's a vote.
Do we have to vote on the amendment? Okay, so, I like to have a roll call vote, and it may not be there, you might have to pencil it in. A roll call vote on the friendly amendment doesn't separate the regular board meeting into the regular board meeting minutes and the hearing meeting minutes of June 24th. Roll call on that vote.
Trojan?
Yes.
Okay.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so, we had a, we have an amendment. So, now before us, we have the approval of the minutes of the June 10th, 2025, Committee of the Whole, June 24th, 2025, regular board meeting, and the June 24th fiscal year 2026 public budget hearing meeting minutes. I have a motion. I have a motion.
So moved.
It's been made.
Well, we amended it.
We amended it.
Okay.
Okay. And so I'm offering all three, okay?
Motion second.
Okay, and all, oh, roll call on that, then.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I want to thank Eagle Eye Trustee Bob Trojan for that catch. Thank you very much. All right.
I read his stuff.
So under H, action items, I'm going to mix up the agenda just a little bit. I like to have a motion to approve item number four, the approval of the Studer Education Renewal Contract, BR 8302. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Gloria, seconded by?
Second.
By Crystal, Salto. Any discussion on it?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to start again, I'm just going to do this systematically because I think I've been ignoring the left-hand side every time I sit here. Anything here?
You're good.
Any discussion?
No.
No? Bob?
I just want to make clear that in the nine items that they are going to do, one of which gives you the opportunity of having a bouncing board, you know, idea of brainstorming, hey, just me and you type of thing, and what do you think about this, or what do you think about that? Use them as a sounding board. I mean, that's part of the nine items or number nine? Dr. Spearman? Yes?
Oh, I thought you were talking.
No, I'm talking to you.
Yeah.
Looking right at you.
Yes.
To be sure that you use them as a sounding board.
Definitely.
Studer, when you've got something on your mind that you don't want to discuss with the cabinet first, you want to use them to bounce it off their eyes, see what they think, right?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And to that point, based on discussions I had with President Spearman, I asked him specifically how many times he called Studer, and he gave me the response, but then our discussion ensued, and he said, well, our, our calls are really either Teams meeting or Zoom meetings, whichever technology is working that day. So, okay. So he's indicated to me that he actually does have those type of touch bases with them. So Kristen, any question? John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I was, I see that this was attorney reviewed, and I'm happy to see that. I did see in the contract that they're going, Studer is, we're contracting with them for one board retreat and three days of half retreats. I wasn't sure that was going to be in there. Let's see.
I just want to, I don't believe the board retreat's part of the.
It's in the contract.
It's in the contract.
Is that the original contract? Didn't we ask for?
That's in the July 10th, 2025 contract.
It's number two on, on the first page, number two. Three half-days and one annual.
You have the original one.
But it doesn't say with the board.
Yeah, that, that should be cabinet.
That could be the cabinet level.
That's not the, the two board retreats.
It doesn't say board level.
The two board retreats were taken out.
It doesn't say board.
That was supposed to be a full-day cabinet retreat that we typically do in December, and then other one, our quarterly half day that she works directly with the board.
The only board involvement is item number eight.
Cabinet.
Where they, where they call our quarterly check-ins.
Yeah, the quarterly check-ins and then, right.
That's the only time the board's involved.
And that was an amendment to the original.
Yes, that was an amendment, right.
John? Sorry for the interruption. I just didn't want to get too far astray, and I know there's been changes, and we've discussed changes over the last few months on it, so.
Now, remember, right, we, we changed the, in terms of the number, paragraph 11, insurance requirements. I'm mistaken about, question about that. The very end, 24 dispute resolution, we took out the state of Delaware as being the governing law of the agreement, put in Illinois, and I like that. Lawsuits against the college are supposed to be brought in Circuit Court of Winnebago County or in the U.S. District Court, Northern Division of Illinois. That, that should be, I believe, and subject to what Matt might say, but I would ask that Western Division be inserted into that because that's Rockford. Eastern, the Northern District goes from the Mississippi River to Lake Michigan. That means a lawsuit could be filed in Chicago according to this contract, and I think we ought to stick in the Western Division, which is here in Rockford.
Use the mic for online listeners.
I believe our attorney's suggesting that if trustee Nelson wants to make that as a friendly amendment, and if we got a second for it, we could put it out there, and we would amend the agreement to reflect what was the court that you prefer.
It, it is the U.S. District Court for the Northern District of Illinois, but we would add Western Division.
Western Division.
Because we are the Western Division.
The, you're, I'm assuming that's a motion, then?
Yes.
Okay, so then if we have a second for it, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, okay. So for discussion purposes, then, we would make the change and just add that comma, Western Division or whatever, and then pending approval through Studer and attorney review, it would be all good to go.
I'm fine with that. I guess the only caveat I'd ask is maybe, maybe the motion be, the motion should be per attorney review, just so we don't have to bring this back if they don't agree to that specific language. I think it would come to, I agree with trustee Nelson's point that.
Per approval by Studer and RVC attorney review.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay, is that?
Yeah.
John, that's your motion, right? Western Division per, okay, and friendly motion, okay, seconded. So let's have a roll call, the amendment to add comma, Western Division to that section of the agreement, per Studer agreement to the change, and per RVC attorney approval of the set, of the same. Roll call.
Amendment.
Just for the amendment, right, just for the amendment.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Gazuntite. Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so that it's been minorly modified, the Studer Education Renewal Contract, and if we go through this vote, then it's, we vote to pass it or approve it, and then it passes the Studer's review and attorney review, it will not be coming back to us. This vote is final on this agreement. So do I have a motion to approve the Studer Education Renewal Contract, BR 8302, as amended during this meeting? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
May I speak?
Uh, yes, now you can speak.
I want to make clear that I am voting against this contract. We've had a contract with Studer for five years. I haven't seen any real value to it. I don't think it was ever used for the original purpose, and I was on the board when this originally came up. And that was, really had to do with Dr. Spearman himself, and various controversies that were relevant at that time. And so, you know, if there was some other consultant that might yield better results, I'd be, I would enter to that, but I will have to vote no. Thank you.
Any other comments before we vote? Roll call. And this is, and again, this is on BR 8302, as amended, we're voting to approve this agreement.
Yeah.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
No.
Nelson?
No.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, no. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Before I vote, just like to comment that the item that, some of the items that concerns people, trustees have had regarding this agreement stem from the board itself. We had a board chair that took a pass on the review with Studer on a regular basis, and in doing so, denied fellow trustees from learning from what Studer was actually doing with the administration. And then subsequent chairs weren't made aware of this opportunity and therefore weren't able to pass along in addition any other comments or anything they might have learned from Studer because they didn't realize this was baked into the contract. One, that's a fault on us for taking a pass on it originally, and two, not being more aware of the, of the agreement. And we, I believe we've amended it so that we can get at least quarterly reviews from Studer, and my vote is being swayed largely, not necessarily by President Spearman's desire for the strategic planning portion of it, but the survey that was inspired by trustee Trojan of the cabinet, who indicated that they valued at least two-thirds or a little bit more than two-thirds of the services that Studer provided. So I am voting yes, and I believe that means it passes by one vote.
Yes.
Enough? All right. I, back to the regular agenda. Approved claim sheet, check registered, June 2025, BR 8299.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve Purchase Report A, FY 2025 Amendments, BR 8300-A?
So moved.
Seconded.
Got it? Okay, roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve Purchase Report B, FY 2026 Amendments, BR 8300-B?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
Nelson and Kudia.
Yeah. John?
As we have often done, and for the record, I want to indicate that both of these requests for purchases were brought up in the Committee of the Hall meeting, and I believe questions were asked at that time. This is a substantial amount of money contained in, or, and, let's see. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, point of order, which one are we on?
We're on Purchase Report B, FY 2026 Amendments.
Well, I'll, I'll say the, I'll finish my statement. We discuss these in the Committee of the Hall, and we ask questions, and we often question what money is being spent for, and that includes the next one as well.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call on Purchase Report B, BR 8300-B?
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve Purchase Report C, FY 2026 Purchases, BR 8300-C? Motion?
So moved.
Motion by Trojan, seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Simpson. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Do I have a motion to approve Human Services Generalist Certificate, BR 8301?
So moved.
Moved by Trojan, seconded by?
Simpson.
Simpson. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve Kishwaki Education Consortium Emergency Medical Technician EMT Memorandum of Understanding, BR 8303.
So moved.
So moved by Kudia?
Second.
Seconded by Salto. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
I could just have a moment. Um, I, I would say that the, the, I did notice that the memorandum of understanding was attorney reviewed, and it looks like to me they caught the misnumbering of several pages of the contract, or of the document, but the contract itself is backwards in terms of pages, from page three of two to page seven of two, and probably should be corrected. But I will, since it's a scrivener's error, I will approve.
That's a yes?
That's a yes.
Okay.
I think. Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve Strengthening Community Colleges Training Grant Subaward Agreement, Highland Community College, BR 8304. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moving by Trojan, seconded by?
Second.
Simpson, Simpson or Jenna? Who, who?
Who was it? Simpson.
Okay.
I don't know.
She's a seconding machine tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto? Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Motion to approve strengthening community colleges training grant sub award, McHenry County College, BR 8305.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Kudia and Salto.
Yeah.
It might be helpful, Mr. Chairman, to repeat the motion and second person so she could duly record it, right, Annie? That's the way you instructed me anyway, so.
Okay.
So you would repeat who motioned and who seconded so she can record it.
Okay.
Because she, she was having trouble hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next item is just a first reading and I had suggested in a previous meeting I might want to make a motion to spin rules. I am not asking if that don't want it, we're just going to do a first reading on the amendment to Board Policy 3, Cullen 20 dot zero one zero, job posting and hiring, BR 8306. This is going to lay over to the August meeting at which time we can vote on it and make a change to the, that policy. As a reminder, this would change that we would no longer be voting on the personnel report, but it would be presented to us in its same format every month. We simply wouldn't be voting on it. And since we're laying it over, the policy is still in effect and so there's no confusion at all, we're going to be voting on the personnel report for the final time hopefully this month. Personnel report, do I have a motion to approve the personnel report, BR 8307?
So moved.
Moved by Trojan, seconded by Isaiah Blake. So we got a motion by Trojan, seconded by Blake for the personnel report, BR 8307. Any discussion? Okay, roll call.
Trojan?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
And I'd just like to remind people that the vote was really kind of ceremonial because it doesn't really affect who's hired, who can retire. So this is why we're doing away with it, or at least devoting on it. So, other business, new business?
No.
No new business, unfinished business?
No unfinished.
Okay. Updates, reports, president's update.
Good evening, trustees. During the July committee of the whole meeting, board members asked about our leadership team updates. These updates were the result of the anonymous survey feedback and Studer Education Consulting. Vice President Snyder shared this with you in January at the board retreat. I truly hope you liked them as this and the board videos are two of the ways we are trying to make sure the college is aware of the valuable information being shared during board and community of the whole meetings. On a fun note, I had the personal pleasure of attending the Smart Camp presentations as dad. My youngest was a part participant in the program and like many students, he was reluctant to attend, but each night he came home, he could speak to manufacturing skills like welding, which was his favorite. Overall, there were 15 students enrolled each of the four weeks, with about 13 to 14 middle schoolers completing each week. The students consisted of 23 females and 31 males from Boone, Ogle and Winnebago counties. I want to thank Dr. Stewart, Dr. Cindy Tobin and her team for the great work they are doing. Last but not least, earlier this month, I was able to attend the President's Academy Summer Institute hosted by the American Association of Community Colleges. There were almost 70 presidents participating at the institute. The purpose of the institute is to give presidents a safe space and place to connect with colleagues and share experiences, issues and solutions. Spouses were also invited to attend, spouses and partners were also invited to attend and they had a different schedule than the presidents. However, my spouse did not attend, unfortunately. But the presidents in attendance had experience ranging from one to 20 plus years. While expanding our network, we had reminders regarding the importance of developing a positive culture because culture beats strategy every day. We also discussed strategies for uplifting our leadership team, engaging the board and being aware of the legal impact the federal administration has on community colleges. During the conference, we had a presentation from Elaine Lynn Herring, the author of Unlearning Silence. She shared with us her take on core relational interests and how we can use them in our leadership roles as presidents. Lastly, I'll share that AACC is one of the big six higher education organizations nationally and the only organization that is primarily focused on community college advocacy. Dr. Walter, Walter Bonfis, the current president, did announce his retirement and the new president will be Dr. DeRion Pollard. She was a community college president in Maryland and in California, but most recently serves as president of Nevada State University. I believe her new role will begin in January. That ends my report.
Thank you very much.
Do you have a comment or two? Who wants to comment? You go that way then first.
This is for Dr. Stewart. Did you say 15 at Smart Camp this year?
15 per week.
Per week. How does that compare with previous summers?
In previous years, we had three cohorts. This year we had four cohorts and if possible, we'll go to five next year. So 15 per cohort gave us 60 students this year as opposed to 15 by three gave us 45 last year. Yeah.
That's a good program. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comment?
Yes, I just like to expand on your leadership update, which Anne pushed out to all of us. I read through them and I was really quite pleased. Not only did it encapsulate the board meeting actions, but also there were some new things in there and some refreshing things or updating rather, for me at least. You know, for example, probably we forgot about it, but we got a 10-year reprieve on the HLC with no monitoring for 10 years. And I think, you know, that was in January and the kind of, you know, we probably forget about it, but it's a very big accomplishment. Last year at 24, Starlight Theater won seven Broadway World Chicago Awards. And I don't know if we ever disclosed that at the board meeting, but there's new information in there which I found very useful. And more importantly, this report apparently goes to all employees. Now to me, that's a major accomplishment because this way, nobody's in the dark. No employees in the dark. They get that nine or 10 or 11-page report every month. And if they read it, they're up to date, just like you and me. So I think that's, that's really a good report and I thank you for pushing it out to us and I hope to see it next month.
Any other comments? Thank you. Leadership team update?
Good evening, trustees. I want to welcome Lamise Diop, who began her appointment as the interim cultural excellence and belonging specialist on July 14th, 2025. Lamise previously worked for RVC as an administrative assistant for the Intercultural Student Service Office, a getting started center coordinator and an academic and transfer advisor. So welcome Lamise. And RVC is supporting Vive tu vita informa in hosting the Health Equity Fiesta Tour on Saturday, August 2nd, 2025, from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM in the Physical Education Center. The Health Equity Fiesta Tour is a celebrated initiative bringing essential health services to underserved communities throughout Chicagoland or in this case, Rockford. Their mission is to address health disparities by focusing on access to care for vulnerable groups, raising awareness by educating communities about preventable health conditions and empowering through action by offering free and low-cost health services and wellness education. The event has served over 3,000 attendees in the past seven years by providing inclusive, comprehensive health services tailored to the needs of underserved populations. That ends my report. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening, trustees. In what we believe to be the first ever event like this at Rock Valley, one of our baseball players and a Sycamore native, Ethan Storm, was selected by the Tampa Bay Rays in the 13th round of the Major League Baseball Draft a couple of weeks ago. He was a 30, 387th pick overall. Ethan was a pitcher for RVC in 2023. He was a freshman in his first year, striking out 71 batters, the fourth highest total in our history for a single season. He had the red shirt for an injury during the 2024 season, but returned in 2025. In the spring, he made seven starts holding opposing batters to a .182 batting average, which is very good if you don't follow baseball, and averaged more than one and a half strikeouts per inning pitched. Congratulations to Ethan and the entire RVC baseball program for that amazing accomplishment. I don't think this ever happened here in our history, so that's pretty cool. Other updates, RVC will be represented well this summer at the Illinois State Fair. The Illinois Community College Board is celebrating its 60th anniversary and has coordinated two separate opportunities to enhance participation. First, on August 7th, our mascot, Arvy, has been invited to participate in the ICCB Mascot Day. RVC will be supported by our executive director of marketing and communications, Ms. Jennifer Thompson. Also then, on October, August, I'm sorry, August 14th, RVC will host a table in the ICCB tent and showcase a few of our CTE and workforce programs on site. Finally, and not to be outdone, the Boone County Fair is right around the corner, running from August 5th to 10th, and RVC will once again be represented well in the exhibition space throughout the run of the fair. A huge thank you this year for the center in learning and retirement staff and their volunteers helping add to our list of staff volunteers and greeters that will be helping us at our table during the event. So that's my update.
Any questions?
I would suggest you get a couple of dozen baseballs and get the young man to sign them off and put them in a trophy case.
That's a very good idea.
Because they can become very valuable in 10 years.
John?
Well, I would actually second Mr. Trojan's suggestion because the Tampa Bay Bucks have an outstanding record of developing young talent and they've competed against the Yankees and the Boston Red Sox on mere percentages of those guys' spending. He may be, he's with the right boys.
The motion in the second is out of order, but feel free to go pursue it, okay?
Alan, I need baseball money.
Thank you, Dr. Har.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Good evening, trustees.
Evening.
I would like to publicly welcome two new employees to the Rock Valley College Human Resources Team. Allison Taylor is joining us as the executive assistant to human resources. Allison brings a wealth of institutional knowledge and experience. Additionally, Dana Coats is joining us as the director of talent acquisition and development. Dana brings a vast knowledge of human resources development experience from both higher education and corporate enterprise. I am delighted to welcome both Allison and Dana as they have already begun to contribute to human resources by providing excellent service to our employee base. Thank you.
Thank you.
Evening.
We're less than a month away from the start of the fall semester and we're on track to meet our goals for enrollment. As of today, we're 10% ahead of last year, 91% to budget and 88% to the stretch goal. Also, I'd like to share with you that the Region One Planning Council has released a draft of the 2026-2030 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. According to their website, the purpose of the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, or SEDS, for Northern Illinois is to develop and execute a collaborative economic development approach that strengthens and diversifies the regional economy over the next five years. The plan will ensure the region remains competitive in the global economy and better leverages limited local, state and federal funds to drive job creation, development and improved quality of life. Rock Valley College is named as an educational partner in this plan. We are a core part of the strategy to coordinate and expand education and training programs that provide professional and personal growth. The draft plan is available for public comment on the Region One website until August 15th. There was a SEDS open house today at 4:00 PM at the Region One Planning Council office and there's another opportunity for an open house, which will be held on Tuesday, July 29th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM at the Boone County Administrative Building if anyone wants to participate. Thank you.
Any questions?
Could you kind of put all this down on a piece of paper and send it to us, all this information?
Yeah, I can.
Who's the driving force behind this thing?
So the Region One Planning Council is economic develop, I forget what their
They're federally recognized economic development committee for this region, right?
Yes, I couldn't think of the exact designation that they had, but yes, so we work with them regularly on these types of things.
Yeah, that's the one that Mike Dunn Jr.
Yes.
Heads up.
Former board member, Bob.
I understand that. I know Michael Dunn very well, Junior, that is. I know Mike Dunn too, but.
Any other comments?
Yeah, put it all so we can follow along.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you.
If there's no other comments, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. My first, my first update, or I have three updates or project updates. The first one is actually for Classroom Building One. In 2016, Rock Valley College Classroom Building One was remodeled, remodel was complete. This project was a capital development or a CDB project. And during the design process, the CDB commissioned a statue to be created to sit outside of the building between CL1 and the JCSM buildings near the creek. After nine years, CDB finalized the statue with the artist and the statue was delivered to RVC last week. Currently, the statue is sitting on a gravel pad, but we are working with the HCCTP, HCCTP program to get a concrete pad installed. And we're going to be improving the area around the statue with some landscaping. The statue creator is a Bojan Maranov, a Chicago-based artist. The statue shows a person standing on a round ball, which we believe may be the earth, with their hand extended upward. We haven't heard from the artist yet, but we have contacted the artist to get a description of the statue and what his vision was so that we can share that with the college. The next item is the update on water leaks from the recent storm. If you recall, the area was struck by a severe thunderstorm that had high winds, hail and heavy rain. After the storm was over, the college had water leaks in most of the buildings on campus. Most of the leaks were small in nature and all, but, and all have been addressed and repaired. But one area that sustained more water intrusion than any other location was the Woodward Technology Center ground floor. A drain in the air intake pit plugged and the water rose up so quickly in the pit that the water came in the air intake and caused flooding. Fortunately, the flooding was contained to a hallway and one lab area. Each area had concrete floors and we were able to dry these areas out very quickly and unplugged and cleaned the drain. No major damage occurred and the costs were relatively minor at around $11,000. Also, my final update is on the tuck pointing turret wall update. As the board is aware, during our tuck pointing project, we had one section of a wall on the Stenstrom Student Center Bridge turret collapse. This area houses the stairs between the ground floor creek area and the bridge. We have been working with the architect to determine if the wall should be replaced with a rubble wall design or build the wall back utilizing what's called CMU block technology, which is the more current standard method for building a wall of this type. The preliminary estimate for the CU, CMU block wall came in between 160 and $210,000. In contrast, the rubble wall, they believe will be more than twice that cost compared to the CMU wall and the CMU wall will last longer. Based on this information, we are working to create bid documents to rebuild the wall utilizing the CMU block technology. Any questions?
Any questions? John?
Thank you. My first question is, don't we have an art department?
We do.
Can't they like look at the statue and tell you like this is, this is the vision I see for this artist? That's a rhetorical question.
Okay.
In terms of the, the more inexpensive way to repair the damage that you talked about, won't on top of everything else want to look better than a rubber wall?
Well, it will look, not a rubble wall, a rubble wall is a different type. So both methods, you'll have a stone, outer facing look to it. The one that uses the CMU technology, it's just a veneer type, they're just on the surface versus the entire wall. So from, from a aesthetic standpoint, they would look the same, just structurally interior, they would be different.
Okay, so if I walk down there, I won't look and say, oh my God, that looks terrible. I won't even notice.
Actually, one of the walls down there, and I won't say which one, was rebuilt a few years, several years back with the CMU technology. So if you have never noticed it, you So, if you have never noticed it, you...
It probably is good?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Can we invest in one more microphone?
We like to share. So, at the July Committee of the Whole meeting, the cash and investment report was not available as of June 30th due to the early cutoff for the package for the Committee of the Whole Meeting. The June 30th, and cash and investment report has been completed, and the only change from the report from June 27th to July, I mean, July 27th to July 30th, is additional cash was received in both the operating and the capital funds, primarily due to the receipt of tax disbursements from the counties at the end of the month, and along with the entries for interest income. So, there's, it just improved.
John, can you give us a hint as to how much?
So, the change in operating cash investments from May to the end of June was $3,200,000, and then the change in capital funds was $7.2 million.
Did you say, did I hear three billion?
Million.
Million.
Okay, alright.
Million would be really nice, but it's a million.
Any other questions for Alan? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other leadership team update?
No more updates. Thank you.
Iktah report.
No report. I'm going to an executive committee meeting on August 8th and 9th, I think it is. So, I'll have a report next month.
I may regret this, but I'm going to start the trustee reports down there with you, so go ahead.
I would say that, I, I'll pass.
Really?
Yeah.
You want me to come back to you if you're passing?
I'll raise my hand if I want.
Kristen?
I don't have anything this month, thank you.
Bob?
Well, you know what Saturday is, but...
Remind us.
Rock Valley College is hosting the 13th Annual Offseason Robotics Competition, which brings in 32 teams from the greater Midwest area. But also, the team, the teams have been able to fund $5,000 to various scholarships for Rock Valley College, various startup teams in the area, and the teams and attendees are asked to bring in various items that can be donated to Noah's Ark Animal Sanctuary. There's a complete list if you're so inclined. But, so, it's not just a bunch of people doing robot stuff. There's contributions back to the community, and I think that's, and of course, Rock Valley College is hosting the event. There'll be a media PR release on Thursday afternoon at 1:00. Hopefully, the TVs will cover it, and hopefully, whatever's left of the newspaper will cover it, but it'll get its proper promotion this Thursday. And of course, Saturday, it's all day, 8:30 to 5:00, or 5:30.
Thank you.
Anything else?
And you'll be here, Bob?
I will be there.
Jennifer?
Opening ceremonies, I'll be there.
I have a exciting slash interesting dispatch from the, the arts community as it intersects with RVC. So, a book called The Rockford Anthology is coming out in October, and my count thus far is that there are seven RVC alums who have creative work in The Rockford Anthology. And so, this is really exciting. I think that that's like a low estimate, but all the proceeds from The Rockford Anthology, which again comes out in October, but you can preorder, will go to local nonprofits. So, the press is called Belt Publishing, so if you Google "The Rockford Anthology", "Belt Publishing", you'll see it, and some amazing creative writing from RVC grads in the anthology, so check it out when you can.
Thank you.
Gloria?
Oh, as far as trustees?
Trust your report.
Okay, you know, I never thought I would say this, but I think I like algorithms sometimes, and I'll send, the reason is because I'm really impressed with the TV and online ads, Jennifer, that Rock Valley College has on there, where the students are the ones that are speaking about, you know, their particular interest. The videos that they do are just, they're good refreshers. I mean, this is what, my seventh year here, but every time I see another one, it just says, oh yeah, and it's like, it's a good refresher, and I'm glad that they're out there and reaching the public, so I appreciate it. I thought I would just say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Crystal?
No, I'd have to bounce off what Gloria said. I really enjoy seeing all the updates on social media, and Dr. Prior mentioned the Boone County Fair, because you know I'm an avid Booner, so I'm excited to have that upcoming. And the Starlight Theater, I've seen a couple people post about that, and some friends of ours and family have raved about the show, so kudos to that. And Bob, you're, the thing that's happening Saturday, do you know if they have like, is it going to be, I know it's a public event, but are they going to have like food trucks or like any kind of activities out there for people to like?
Well, there's going to be food inside the PEC Center that you could purchase, simple foods.
Okay, okay, alright.
But no food trucks that I know of are going to be outside the building.
Because I know that'll attract people, they're like, what's going on over there?
You know, signs and banners floating around, so you can't miss it as far as where it is. But, yeah, it draws usually 1,000, 1,200, 1,500 people during the daytime, and it's a lot of noise. There's a break at noon time for lunch.
Sure.
But, and there will be scholarships awarded at that time at noon. But, yeah, it's, it's kind of fun.
Anything else, Crystal?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
We're good.
John, did you have something to comment?
I was gonna, I was going to ask Bob, isn't it usually well attended, but he answered.
Okay. Kristen?
I'm coming back to mine, I guess I do have something to say.
Okay, go ahead.
Don't forget, everybody, Mary Poppins, we have Kendall, Olivia, and Henry, we have the banker, Henry's the policeman, and Olivia's Mary Poppins, so you all have to come and watch, so, and I'm, you know.
Stage five.
Yes, so, that's it, that's all I have.
Alright, well, my, my report is, I think it's a little bit different. In terms of, we, we take these opportunities and staff and the president to give each other updates and, and reports on things, and you, and then Bob complimented on certain reports that were shared with us that get shared with the staff. Throughout the last couple of months and maybe a little bit longer, we'd been reviewing the agreement with Studer for leadership development and surveys and the like, and there'd been discussion amongst the board and with President Spearman regarding if the goals that the board thought were going to be achieved with engaging Studer would be, would be achieved and what the end game would be for it. And in the discussions that we've had, in open and not so open, it became clear to me that some of the questions that the board had, possibly for President Spearman, are really more questions for the board and the board leadership throughout the years. One of the things right off the bat with the Studer Agreement, we had a chair that took a pass on funneling information from Studer that they would have had to us as board members, so we were left without certain information because that single individual didn't think that was necessary to, to have those meetings. And then that left Gloria out of the loop because she wasn't aware of it, and then left Bob out of the loop because he wasn't aware that that was an, an opportunity for it. So, it kind of just extended that, that gap of knowledge that we could have been having on feedback from there. And then other, and that all kind of led into some either, either, other discussions where both President Spearman and past chairs have really taken the, the letter of the law seriously, where you have, the president just deals with the board chair, and the board chair is supposed to pass things along. Well, when the board chair doesn't pass things along to the body because they think it's, you know, it's settled business or something, then other members of the board aren't really aware of what's going on. So, my goal is to be, is open and transparent and share the information we can without violating the Open Meetings Act, and to that end, and Kristen can, you know, confirm this, anything that I try to communicate, or most things I try to communicate with President Spearman, I copy Kristen on, just to make sure, as vice chair, to make sure that people are in the loop, or the appropriate chair of the other, or contact for the other committees that we have. And still working through some of this, and I was going to have some discussions on some questions that the, the board had for President Spearman, but in discussions with one of our attorneys, realized since it's really a discussion of how the board chairs communicate with their own trustees, we, we have to talk about that in open, and in the future, we're, we're going to probably have a discussion about that in open at a cow, and how we can open up lines of communications between me as an existing board chair and any future board chairs, and kind of maybe even tweak the policy a bit to make sure that the board chairs aren't allowing certain individuals to bypass policy or give them a pass on certain things, just for consistency throughout board chair and board trustee changes over the years, just to give some, level the playing field and make sure we have more, more consistency in how the board interacts with the chair, with the, with the president, and then the president with his cabinet. So, I appreciate your time, heard me out on this. We're going to talk about this some more in the future. I'm a very kind of flat, level, management, playing field type of person, and I was hoping that down the road, it could instill some of that into our own college culture. You mentioned something about culture overcoming certain things, and if we can change the culture where we're more everybody's level, put aside the stuff that happens outside of here and just focus on this, and there's no chief necessarily, there has to be a decision maker on certain things, but I just want to see if we can bake that into the culture via policy or something going forward, so. I appreciate your time, now, for the student trustee report.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board, President Spearman and guests. Recently, I had the opportunity to visit the Rock Valley College Advanced Technology Center to observe the Smart Camp program for middle school students. This camp is focused on hands-on STEM activities, and it was encouraging to see such a high level of student engagement and enthusiasm. While I was there, I spoke with the Smart Camp Program Coordinator who shared several important insights. The program had a full attendance of 60 students with very few no-shows. There were approximately 180 students on the waitlist, which clearly shows that there's a strong community interest and demand for this kind of program. During my visit, students were actively participating in projects such as building and racing electric cars and even using them for activities like soccer, which speaks to the creative and applied learning happening in the program. In terms of potential program expansion, like some of us have talked about, the coordinator mentioned two barriers. One, transportation. They had hoped to use part of their funding to purchase vans for field trips, so more like places for engineering or activities of that type. They, the coordinator told me, however, that due to administrative limitations, this purchase was not approved. As a result, that portion of the grant, so that's something that Bob had brought up, you know, we have all this money and it's just gone to waste, you know, why couldn't, well, part of that was, why that couldn't be used was because of this. And that was what the coordinator told me, that that's what the money was supposed to be going towards, the majority of it. But as a result, that portion of the grant remained unused, even though overall funding was sufficient for the year. Two, staffing. The most significant barrier to growth is a need for more personnel. Additional staff would allow the program to safely accommodate more students and provide adequate supervision and support throughout the camp. Additionally, I spoke with a temporary employee working with the program who shared direct feedback with the students, many of them, from the students. Many of them expressed that they wished the camp had been longer than just one week. The students were enjoying themselves so much that they wanted more time to learn, build, and engage with the activities. Based on this feedback, the idea of extending the program by an additional, additional week in the future could be worth exploring. From what I saw, this program is a valuable resource that inspires young students in STEM and gives them early exposure to college-level facilities and instruction. I believe personally that it has a strong potential for growth, and I hope conversations can continue about ways to support its expansion, especially in response to the enthusiasm and demand from both students and families. I would like to thank you all for the opportunity to share this update. This week, I'll be at, going to the Student Orientation Event that's happening July 24th, and hopefully, next month, I'll have an update for you guys for that, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know about, well, go ahead, Bob. I was going to say, I don't know if you learned your public oratory skills here or not, but wherever you did, they did a great job, so, thanks very much.
I've always been a great speaker, so.
Yes, thank you for your report, and I have also observed the Smart Camp in the past several times, and I, I would like to throw a challenge out to Dr. Stewart and Dr. Spearman. How can we build this thing up, as our trustee has indicated, in terms of, do we need a transportation vehicle? I don't know, but if, if it'll help, we should do that. Do we need an additional, maybe summertime employee to help the Smart Camp grow? When you have a backup of 100 kids that are waiting to get in and we can't service them, shame on us. I mean, one of the other things I learned in reading your monthly leadership is, we got $1.1 million of CTE and workforce grants awarded in December of last year. I don't know where the money went, but I'm sure it went somewhere good, but maybe grants like that can help us build that particular program up, because it's not just for the young kids, but they're future students.
Mm-hmm.
It's future students, I mean, what a great marketing tool. So, I challenge the administration to come up with a plan and bring it to us on how we could grow it.
John?
Well, I, I could also then challenge the administration, when my children were young, they both went to WizKids College at Rock Valley. I haven't seen WizKids around, but I'm always struck by the amount of effort and energy we're putting into the ATC and technical things, but it just seems that we don't move off that 80/20 academic, 80 and 20 and technical as the years pass by. And one way, especially with declining students, is to revamp and reintroduce the WizKids College and get kids going to the main campus. I, I think the creek is too big for a creek biology, but certainly chess and, and all these thinking efforts of a, of a good summer camp are available and should be put forward, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay.
I remember, right, I think our last CTE liberal arts was 23 or 25%, so there was a movement up during this last reporting period. Hopefully, it continues to move.
Okay, there's no other. RVC Foundation Liaison Report.
Yes, I have several things. After 13.5 years, after 4,000 awarded scholarships, hundreds of donors that have been connected with their recipient awardees, Linda is retiring from the foundation. And on July 31st, from 1:00 to 3:00, she's having, they're having an open house for her on the lawn, and hopefully, it doesn't rain, but if you wish to stop by and see Linda Berger and wish her a happy retirement, you are so encouraged. Secondly, is the Second Chance Scholarship Application Period opens July 30th and closes on August 14th, and this would be another opportunity for kids to...
14th. And this would be another opportunity for kids to take advantage of our record amount of scholarship monies that are available this year. Thirdly, so far, the quiet behind the scenes, talking about the campaign, we've got $1.8 million in the pipeline against our goal of $2.5 million and we haven't even gone public yet. So that's a very good sign. And lastly, don't forget November 7th, the scholarship, annual scholarship luncheon at the Radisson Hotel. You're all, the, certainly the trustees are invited. Thank you.
Is that it, Bob?
That's it.
Any questions for Bob? Thanks very much. We have a Freedom of Information Act FOIA report for your review. And unless there's questions on that, I'd just like to remind that probably in September then, after we vote on this in August, the Personnel Report will be on this list of updates and reports. Will be presented for review only and not for, for a vote. And before we, we are going to a closed session. I just want to comment though, listed on the agenda, there's two items, categories. One is the purchase of real property for the use of public body, but we're not talking about, so we're not going to, not going to read that portion into it. And as I kind of alluded to in my trustee comments, a discussion or discussions that I wanted to have that, based on guidance from our legal team, since a good portion of that discussion actually involves discussion, relationship between the chair and the president and the communication from the chair to the trustees, that communication between the chair and the trustees isn't something necessary that we can talk about in close. So we'll arrange somehow to talk about that in open at a later date. So at this time, we're going to move to adjourn to closed session for the litigation has been filed, is pending, or probable per Section 2C 11, all in accordance with the Illinois Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Seconded.
Gloria and somebody over here.
John.
John. And roll call?
Trojan.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Goldsmith, yes. Salto?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we're just discussing the litigation, so invite whomever you want.
All right.